That's right, good, good luck.
Welcome everybody here and uh tonight this meeting and we'll say the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I use a prayer?
Your heavenly father, we just thank you for this new adventure. I thank you, father god, for the old adventure. I thank you, father, that you take all things and work them together for us and turn them for our good in Jesus name. I thank you, lord, for our city and I thank you, lord, that we do things decently and in order. And I thank you um for everybody that's represented here and bless their homes. And father god, we just want to lift up uh Mr. W.C. tonight, father god, and ask that you heal that hip and let him get along good as he is in recovery. In Jesus's name, amen.
Say Brenda.
Here.
Dennis.
Two.
Nancy.
Here.
Renee.
Here.
We have a motion to approve a minute. I'm looking.
So what?
Motion made.
Second.
Motion second, roll call.
Brenda.
Yes.
Renee.
Yes.
Motion to uh approve the November December financial report.
Um I make a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve, have a second.
One second.
Second to Nancy, roll call.
Brenda. Yes.
I have a.
Pay the bills. Pay the bills.
Yeah. We have a motion to approve the bills to be paid, any any problems with that?
I make a motion to approve the bills to be paid as presented.
Have a motion, take it from Dennis, roll call.
Nancy.
Yes.
Brenda. Renee.
Yes.
Yes.
I must be out of order here.
We've got a uh update on the vintage sewage issue. Donnie, do we have a deal on that?
Well, we're still working on the pricing on the for the light for the electric. We're trying to get them to drop that price down some. We already have ten thousand dollars on the pump.
I know, you said six thousand dollars move across the road?
Six thousand dollars just to drive it and Shane and them are uh like Chris Tony Vardner is gonna talk to them. He's on the board.
Yeah.
And he's gonna talk to them and try to, we're just trying to get some things a little bit cheaper than what, you know, and then we'll move forward.
That's pretty stiff.
Yeah, cause this is, we're gonna have to buy a lot of bikes though too.
Yeah, right.
Pretty strict, you know.
Alright, we're gonna table this or?
Do you have any idea about how long it's gonna be? I mean, this has been going on quite a while.
It's going on for what, three, four months?
Yeah, my word.
Yeah, it's been going on for a while. It it really needs to be done. Oh, it's just gonna cost a lot of money and right now we gotta pump out at the end that's gonna cost eight, ten thousand dollars to get it. I mean, it's really mostly about the money more than anything. Oh, if y'all say go on and do it, we're gonna do it. I mean.
Well, we, I think we've already said, go ahead and do it.
Y'all have, y'all have, but.
Long time ago.
But I'm already over budget on my stuff that I, you know, and then now this pump's going up, it's gonna cost eight thousand dollars. So, I mean, I just hate to run and jump into all that money if we're already over budget.
Well, why don't we just table it one more month and we'll see how, if we can switch and move it.
Yeah, cause I just, I just talked to Shane and he talked to Chris Tony and they're gonna try to help, just try to help us on some of the pricing on the power. But we're, I mean, the city's gonna fight for everything, so.
Is that okay with you uh?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Oh, Dave, they got a new engineer.
You know Shane, we've always kind of swapped that out, you know, we got damaged that where they tore the sewer.
Yeah.
You know about that, see, so they're usually, we kind of, you know.
Yeah.
Took care of each other way. Is that the way it was, Steve? He was here.
What?
You know, they had their gen, like the electric company got damage on us, we just take care of it, but then we have to have some work done. Where's uh electric, you know, them hookups up to the city would kind of, they kind of give us a break, you know, or they didn't charge us much.
Right.
Is that the way it's been? Okay, I mean, you've been there the way of, you know, one way or the other. But anyway, that's that's what, you know, Shane, you know about it. So we're gonna table this, y'all gonna take care of this? Uh, we got the plumbing on King Street and College.
Sometimes I just bring this stuff up, cause if I hadn't heard about it in a month or two, then I just wanna know where we are in it. I'm not saying we just have to rush out there and do something, I just wanna know where we are.
Well, Donnie, it's a forty-one thousand dollar deal, it's thirty-five thousand just for the rock.
I'm hoping to get one of our engineers from T L M to come down here and at least agree with, you know, I don't wanna do this and do it this way and then two or three years.
Have to do it again.
Say, hey, I have to do it this way. So I'm trying to get an engineer involved, that way we at least better agreeing with what we're doing.
We dug that up and the pipe in there, what's happened, I think Donnie says, the the pipe is old and where they're put together back then, the material has washed out and the sewage is running out here.
That's yeah.
It's a cavity out up down there.
That's happening by the real running out.
Do what?
Real running out.
Well, it is not bad like it was, but at one time it was, uh, but right now it's pretty stable, ain't it, Don?
Well, the the deal is there's a sewer right down the street from both, there's a sewer within probably a hundred yards of their house, but it's only, it's less than two foot deep. And I got an engineer to come look and he recommended that we run it to the sewer that's closer to Shane and him house, cause it's eight foot deep. And uh it's just a lot harder and gonna cost more money and stuff, so I just, it's it's just taking some time.
No, that's fine, no.
Everything lined up and get engineers involved.
Right, that's fine. So you you're wanting an engineer to look at the one on King Street too?
Right.
Yeah, well.
You know, we go get up.
They've already looked at it and we think we're gonna have to dig it up and replace it, but the gravel was gonna cost, what was it, Chris Don?
The gravel was thirty-two thousand dollars.
It's gonna be thirty-two thousand dollars.
And then they said, they didn't give, they estimated, you know, remember they didn't tell us it was a set price to do the rest. And to dig up that short space, looks to me like we could, we could uh lease a hole from a farm or something and Donnie and us could dig that up and it'll be open enough that you won't have men standing down there, it's gonna fall in on them.
The the reason they wanted to do the gravel was so they could come immediately behind it and pave it.
Right.
If we put dirt in it or, you know, put something else in it, it won't cost nowhere near as much, but we'll have to lay back straight like that for a while and let it settle. And that's why they was wanting to use gravel for it, because that.
But the gravel won't settle as much as the.
They was coming in here to have all that paving and that was part of the paving they was gonna do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a lot of money for gravel.
Right.
I figured that means it was lots of tons. I didn't think you could put that much in that hole. I mean, that, you know, I don't know. We're gonna, we're gonna have to put this on hold.
That's fine, just table both of them. So I make a motion that we table both of those until next month.
We got a motion to table, Steve, this project?
I'll second it.
Got a motion made and second, roll call.
Dennis.
Good.
Yes.
Now we've got the, we're gonna square in the new motor and the bolt.
I think that was the first one. Are we going over there?
I don't know if I'm gonna get you on here, so if y'all want to line it up. I'm gonna do, what I'm gonna do is if everybody's okay with this, I'm gonna have the ultimate board in. And then I'm gonna do, actually, no, I'm gonna start with the mayor. I I I'm gonna start with the mayor, that's right, I'll do that. I've already had court today, so I've had a lot of people swearing at me already. So you can add this, you know, it's honored to be here, these are good folks, our board, this board that was here previously, uh, representing the good people. City originally very important Lake County success and I'm honored to be with that mayor, I appreciate it. If you would, raise your right hand. Now, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna read, I'll talk a little fast. But I'm just gonna read this and if you agree, say I do. If you don't, well, don't, don't say that, don't say that. Do you, Shane Hamilton of Ridgely, Tennessee, solemnly swear or affirm you will perform with fidelity the duties of the office to which you've been elected and which you are about to assume in accordance with the constitution and the laws of the state of Tennessee and that to the best of your knowledge and ability that you will faithfully, honestly, and impartially perform all duties imposed upon you as mayor of the city of Ridgely, Tennessee, by the state of Tennessee. Now, well, congratulations, sir. Thank you, sir.
Uh, you can use my gall tonight, I'm not picking up later, okay?
We have notes for our.
Uh, they're on the table right now.
I apologize, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. If you, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you, Renee Bledsoe, Denise Craig, Steve Jones, Trey Wood, Bruce Hayes, and Michael Ford? Almost forgot, we all there for that? S solemnly swear or affirm that you will perform with fidelity the duties of the office to which you've been elected and which you are about to assume in accordance with the constitution and the laws of the state of Tennessee and that to the best of your knowledge and ability that you will faithfully, honestly, and impartially perform all duties imposed upon you as all men and women of the city of Ridgely, Tennessee, by the state of Tennessee.
We do.
That was a good answer. I'm gonna, I'm gonna sign these.
We'll, we'll sign them after he signs.
Good. Home run.
Michael's.
Thank you, sir.
Got hits. This one here, he is. Denise Craig, I don't know who mine is, but I might be mine, that's right.
That's mine. Y'all got Steve's?
It's only one guy, right? Oh, you're signing too?
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
There goes Steve's, third time's late, that's kinda happy.
Anybody got one now?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Alright. Call our meeting to order. Uh, first on the agenda is still the vice mayor's position. Do I have any nominations?
I make a motion to nominate uh Renee Bledsoe.
I second it.
Nominate Renee.
I accept it.
First by Bruce, second by Steve. Roll call.
Yes. Bye.
Yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Yes.
My thing's not in order on here.
Good deal. Congratulations, congratulations, ma'am. Next thing on the agenda is uh update bids to purchase the F three fifty that actually was uh voted on in July. They just kept holding up, holding up, so. Anyway, what what we got in front of us here, I've got a bid from Victory Ford for a F three fifty dual rear wheels and putting a nine-foot electric dump bed on it. Total bid is sixty-nine four seventy-five. And also got a bid from Vi- uh Taylor Ford. They only wanted to bid the truck, they didn't want to mess with the bed. The bed actually, actually, let me back up, the truck from Victory is fifty-four four seventy-five and the bed is fifteen thousand. Taylor did not want to mess with the bed. They told us that they would sell us the truck, but we'd have to go get the bed ourselves. So I reached out to Floyd's over at Sikes and he's gonna sell us the same bed, same price as Victory. Victory is uh about five hundred dollars higher on the truck, but they are going to take the truck to Sikes and get the bed put on, bring it back to Dallas, work for us, so we won't have any time in it whatsoever. So.
I make a motion to go with Victory Ford.
I second it.
That's one with the bed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, alright, so you got a motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Renee.
Yeah.
Prove Victory Ford. Roll call, vote. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, alright, Denise?
Yes.
Please, bro.
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, the the uh next part of that uh that um line item is a dump trailer. Do we wanna try to buy a dump trailer now or do we wanna wait? And what you got in front of you is you got two bids, one from Century for a used trailer, fourteen-foot, it was in his rental fleet. I looked at it, I mean, it's being used, but it's not been it up, it does not look bad. He said he'd sell it for it for eight thousand dollars as in no warranty. Or we can get a new one from him for seventeen seven fifty. And that's from Century. Then you got one, another bid from DB's for seven by fourteen for ten thousand six hundred. Then you got a third one from First Choice with twelve three twenty-nine.
But you said all these are new bid beds?
All these are current beds, yes, I got them within the twelve, twelve seventeen.
Are the dimensions same, are the trailers the same size?
Yeah, they're all seven by fourteen. Uh, well, hold on, the one at at Century is a twelve-foot. So you getting a little smaller trailer, but.
But that's for the one for the eight grand, right?
That's correct.
Eight thou.
What's length on it? It's uh twelve-foot, five-foot, five-inch slide-out ramp, uh eighty-inch wide box, six thousand drop axles, uh two and five sixteen ball, a whole twelve thousand five hundred spring-loaded uh winch, or yeah.
And all the other ones was uh no warranty too?
No, 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 all these other ones are branded, this person on top of Century is a used one.
Okay, so is that something we should consider? I don't know, I don't know, this is not my.
The sensor doesn't have a drive train or anything, you know, just basically, you know, hydraulics.
It's just electric over hydraulics, only thing you have to go back to like a hydraulic bumper, so.
Yeah, seal or something, uh.
Do you know if they're one scissor or two scissors or?
It's a, it's a scissor.
Oh, a scissor gun?
Yeah. Same way on the dump bed on the truck, it's a scissors, well, it's electric, uh scissor lift. Are the weight capacities all the same as far as lifting weight? Fifteen thousand thirteen eight, yeah, they're within two hundred pounds each other.
Thing uh, what departments they gonna come out of?
They think it'll come out of the uh water.
For what?
The water.
Most of the truck and trailer will be covered by the U S D M grant that we were already approved for, we just never bit the bullet and bought people.
How much was that grant?
It's fifty. Do, do we have more in the street than in the water? No.
I mean, it really needs to come out of the street.
That's what I was gonna say.
There's, there's plenty in the street department that would cover it better than water, it's already at a hundred fifteen percent of their budget, so we really, really need to concentrate on just water-related emergency expenses and things like that.
Right.
Um, so it would, it would definitely, that surplus money would have to come out of the street department.
Okay.
Well, just looking at, you know, money-wise, you know, it's like this trailer is not gonna be going all over Lake County or Weston City or anything, you know, when I'm just looking at, and I think I've been looking at the same trailer you have, it's over there at Century marked in front and everything, yeah, and it's in very good shape.
I mean, it's been serviced, they take care of it, they don't let people drunk, junk here trash it out, so I mean, if I was personally buying it, I'd buy it. And I do, you wanna talk, the city needs water, so I do. Do they work on them as far as like hydraulics? Yeah.
Well, I know what you think.
A motion.
Do we have to buy it right now?
Make a motion to buy the one from Century for eight thousand.
Motion by Denise, second. Second by Trey.
Trey.
I'm sorry, Steve and I were discussing this regarding the news, the use points.
Yeah, eight thousand.
Yes.
It's fake.
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Alright, you.
So this uh, while we're on this subject, the the grant for this truck, would I understand it'd be fifty?
Yes. Greg said we got till uh spring to get it spent, but now that we can like check, he said he reimbursed us within two weeks.
And that is a duly truck.
That is correct. With a seven-three gas engine.
Yes. Well, no doubt it can be used. But being used, if, when it gets used, it needs to be taken care of at the same time.
Yeah, I've been around talking to the guys.
Oil cheaper than parts.
I agree with it.
Exactly.
Alright, uh, next item on the agenda is to hire or appoint a working street supervisor. Uh, we've not had that, I don't think. They took it away and put it all on Donnie. We used to have that and I think that's the right, we need to go back to the simple fact that one person can oversee all of it. And I think our streets have not been cleaned like they used to be and just trying to get everything back on track like it was. So we got two, two city employees that applied, we had nobody from outside, we got Darryl Cox and Johnny Parsons.
Is this gonna be a working supervisor?
Working supervisor position, yes, sir. I mean, my recommendation uh, and nothing against one of the applicants, but my recommendation would be Darryl Cox, just for the simple fact he's the oldest tenured employee the city has.
I make a motion to hire Darryl Cox.
I second that motion.
Yeah, that's a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is, does Darryl have license?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Michael?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Congratulations, Darryl. One thing I want to admit off the agenda is to hire street personnel, because that'll be, you know, Darryl and I will get with those applicants and interview. So we need to move to number five.
Hey Shane, we're, we're gonna let the department head, you and me.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
You and, you and the department, that's correct.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah. They would know the first, better we would.
Great, great.
Do what now? That's right. You come out to Steve?
No, please.
Oh, oh, yeah. Alright, let's see, uh. After I looked over the budget, when I, after I got elected, I asked the best to give me some information and I started looking at different things and I've talked to Chief Cubs quite a bit and it looks from twenty twenty-two until now, the uh salary at the police department went from two hundred fifty thousand to one seventy-five. So they, they have not been able to keep a full crew uh at, you know, staying here, cause other people pay better than we do and I know we can't pay what everybody else, but just by seeing what work he's done so far, I think uh he's doing a great job and uh this, this right here, of course, really I should have put, let him update first before we got to this, kinda see, but he will pick up the tail end. But just moving some money around to help him get his salaries with him and his officers halfway competitive with other agencies. Uh, basically what that's doing is that's, that's moving a dollar an hour. The other day I had a lot of money, uh, he saved us a bunch of money and he will get to that uh in his report. So I'm just asking what the board would like to do there.
Well, we definitely need.
I wanna add that the revenue on the tickets has also quadrupled from the day I started.
Yeah, he's gonna cover that.
To the day that he.
Right.
Well, I make a motion to, to do up a dollar an hour or however I need to say it.
We, we definitely need to do something to keep the police officers here.
Yes.
I mean.
I mean, right now, he's got three certified officers, he just hired a new gentleman last week and a half ago. Certified, so we're not, we'll have to send, you know, we got one at the moment, so we want to go to the academy. And if he can find in one more, he'll have a full crew. Uh, and that's a, that's a long, long way from where we've been.
Absolutely.
So I got a, a motion by Renee.
Yeah.
I second it.
Second by Denise.
Bruce?
Yes, ma'am.
Steve?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, uh, Chief Cubs, can you give us a report, please?
So this uh, this report is just to keep you guys up to date on what we've done since August the first, uh, that was my first day. Uh, and we've accomplished a lot in five months and I'm not taking credit for all that. And uh, Joe England, Brian Avery, have been with me every step of the way, helping me out. So uh, as of August the first, we've uh, we've had twenty-four arrested, uh, seven of those felony, four DUI and those arrests are ran from child abuse, aggravated robbery, uh burglary, weapon charges, drug charges. And that's not counting arrests that the deputies have made while covering our streets, so that's, that's been pretty good. We're over forty speeding citations, uh, and that's just with two officers caught. Over two thousand dollars in revenue from those citations so far. I think there's roughly five or six unpaid right now. Uh, Corey Gladwell, he came down and we went through the evidence room at the police department and there was evidence sitting in there from the nineties. So we, we got that uh inventory, uh, we got ordered from the judge to destroy the evidence. Uh, we had over twenty guns that were seized and confiscated by the police department that were awarded to Ridgeville Police Department and we have plans for those later to trade those in and, and get new weapons, so. That's not gonna cost the city anything. Uh. The computers were, they were in pretty rough shape, uh, as far as security, as far as uh being slow, as far as our, our files go and our reporting. Uh, Joe England came in and saved us money from having to hire uh an I T guy. Did charge the thing willingly, came down and helped us out. Uh. Then we looked in and we found uh, there was a B C I F grant and that's the Violent Crime Intervention Fund. It was actually uh expired in June of twenty-three. Uh, luckily for us, they reinstated it. So uh, I looked and uh Danny Dale was uh, was the signature on that and it was originally for the uh tag readers that they were gonna put on the streets. Uh, there was a few weapons on there and so I called Joe England again. Said, Joe, do you know anything about this fund? And he had just got finished uh getting his taken care of, but that, that fund was uh about sixty-four thousand dollars.
Oh, gosh.
Wow.
So, we decided that the tag readers were important, but the things in our department. we decided that the tag readers were important, but the things in our department that were outdated and, and things that we needed that could save the city money were more important than tag readers, so we amended that, that fund, and, uh, we have a Ford F-one fifty four-wheel drive coming to the police department that, that Grant is gonna pay for. We also have brand-new vests for all officers. We traded in our old firearms, our duty weapons, brand-new duty weapons, uh. We are about to purchase a Dodge Charger from the sheriff's office, uh, man, Brian Avery is, that, they're actually getting ready to surplus this vehicle, because they're in pretty good shape on that. They have a couple spares, and this was one that they were just gonna bid out, so he's gonna sell that to us, and that Grant's also gonna take care of that purchase, uh. So we also, uh, we purchased three sets of tires, uh, we did that early on, because I found, uh, it was a pretty good deal, a hundred and nineteen dollars a tire for a law enforcement pursuit tire, which they're normally three hundred and some dollars a tire, so I purchased three sets of those for our explorers, uh, saved us quite a bit, uh. We all got new uniforms, uh, the equipment, you know, we look professional when we're out now, uh, we look like, we our, our equipment is updated, we have equipment where we can do our jobs effectively, uh. We've added Assistant Chief Austin Rivers, uh, and a new one, we brought him in, the type of person he was that people were gonna follow. Uh, we got, we got Hunter Thomas, and we just recently hired Timothy Clark. Uh, he was a former chief at Rutherford Police Department, and he brings us over sixteen years' experience. Uh, I've talked to over ten law enforcement officers that have worked with him, nothing but good, uh, so we're glad to have him a part of our team.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
We have one more spot available, if anybody's interested.
Hey, it's been a while since I've seen both police officers in one spot.
We have one spot available, and we're looking to do that pretty, pretty quickly, so, uh, I do wanna thank, uh, the old board for giving me a shot, I, I definitely appreciate it, and I love this challenge, it has been challenging over the last five months, but I love every minute of it, and I do look forward to working with us.
Thank you, Jason. Hey, Shane, Shane, have you talked to your attorney about this story? She advised us what to do.
About what?
Might be called.
Oh, yes.
I make a motion to, uh, approve the card.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Can I be a devil's advocate here?
Sure.
Nothing against any of them, but Chief Cubs, were any of the other guys paid while they were on duty? I mean, I understand Joe England, I understand Corey Gladwell, you know, because they dedicated their time, but the, what about the other ones, the other cards?
So. All right, so this is, this is my thing on that, we, uh, you know, the city originally has been working on skeleton crews, and we have not had the manpower at all to cover these streets twenty-four hours a day. Uh, the Lake County deputies, they get paid by the sheriff's office to do their job, right? But they've, they've got added responsibility now, they have to cover our streets as well. And keep in mind, while they were doing this, they were working on skeleton crew. But they were still down here and making arrests, filing reports, turning those reports over us so we could follow up on them. So, yeah, they were getting paid by the Lake County Sheriff's Office, but originally wasn't coming out any money. These guys were being paid by the sheriff's office to patrol. Our city and our citizens in this city deserve to have our streets patrolled twenty-four seven, we were unable to do that. And I feel like those deputies, they, they went above and beyond. They could have stayed in, in Tiptonville, and somebody calls nine-one-one and they're getting beat up. I mean, look at fifteen minutes before somebody gets down here. But those guys dedicated themselves to the city, and I think they're owed something, and I, and I think we need to appreciate what they give us.
You made the motion?
Steve's got a motion on the floor.
I'll go ahead and second that, I, I agree with Jason a hundred percent, you know, especially this day and time that, uh, you know, all you had to do was turn TV on, and you don't have to be a police officer.
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and that, just showing them a little appreciation, if we get the tight somewhere down the road, whatever, here they come. You, you know, they'll, they'll be back here again, so.
Yeah.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
Michael?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Trey? He can't, can both.
Okay. Uh, Donnie's next on the agenda, but I just wanted to give a little update. He called me, Donnie was before, the first year was before Christmas, the state guys came. Uh, he called me and I went down and met with those guys while they were there doing some inspections on him. They done great, they weren't there to write him up, criticize, and they rode to help. Everything checked out good, uh, they, they did give Donnie praise, and of course, after, uh, they had left, Donnie and I had a chance to talk. You know, I didn't really know what went on down there at the water department, test-wise, but he showed me there's two, two pages like this, and I did take pictures on the day, I just did not get a chance to make copies of them. But there's probably eight or ten items on that list, on both lists, that he has to do tests daily, seven days a week. I didn't realize that, 'cause I always thought it was sort of like taking your swimming pool, put some chlorine in it, and go on about your business, but it is not like that, so.
No, it, it gets tested every thirty seconds.
Right, well, then he showed me that today, he said, I didn't realize we was getting thirty-second tests either, so. And then he's got a lot of stuff going on.
We're number four in the whole state, our water is.
Good, I mean, they give, they give us good praises, so.
That's good.
So anyway, I don't know if you got anything you wanna add, I mean.
No, probably, I didn't really, I didn't really make no over word or nothing.
Okay.
We, it's, it's a lot for it, and everybody thinks that, you know.
Yes.
We have to do tests on seven days a week, year-round, there's no holidays or nothing.
Right.
It's, it's a lot to keep up with.
Yes, sir. Appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Okay, I did not put on here.
That's good.
Is there any other business?
I'm good.
Would any citizen like to address the board? Yes, ma'am.
Um, so I'm getting ready to do a fundraiser for the animal shelter, and the previous one that we did, the, um, board donated at the city center to let us use, um, is for Valentine's Day. So I was wondering if you guys would be willing to donate six in a year?
I, I don't have no issue with it.
You do, huh?
And, and with that comes the, uh, the contract of what they have to do as far as cleaning and all that.
Yes.
All right, so because we're donating it, I, I just say that if, it, you know, if they have to call anybody to come in and clean, Dog Pound has to pay for that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's the only stipulation I have to thought.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to update y'all on a couple of things we got going on at City Hall, I don't know if most, I think most of you know Jackie. Jackie's been water clerk, she's worked with me now ten months, and we got it running like a little machine down there, um, things are going great. We are in the middle of a remodel right now, we're, that, we had a water damage a couple of years ago, and the money was put in the bank, but nobody ever did the remodel, the walls were just cut out and carpet's stained, and we've got Chris Runions in there, and he is putting in new flooring, we're putting in waterproof vinyl flooring. We've got the walls repaired and painted, we bought shelving, because that room was nothing but a junk pile. It was just stuff thrown in there everywhere, it's been like that for years. We're going through boxes, we're getting stuff ready to call shredding in, so we can get rid of, I've got record retention schedules, and we're gonna start going through records, getting rid of what we don't need, and start a better filing system, so that if we need to find something, we can go right to it. Um, and we're also getting that project done under budget, um, we're gonna, just, we're just moving right along, um, I did wanna look at later getting a collection agency, which is something that's not been done in, I don't think ever, we've got a lot of unpaid water bills that nobody's ever collected from years and years ago, and we can collect back in ten years. And we can hire a collection agency to collect it, and we pay them when they collect money. And if we pay them ten percent, but we collect five thousand dollars, that's five thousand dollars we didn't have yesterday. So that is one thing that I was gonna look at, but I wanna get some togetherness together for y'all before we get that, but I just want, we're doing good, we've got things rolling, and um, she's learning how to do payroll and payables and everything, that way if I have to be out for something, she can step right in and help out.
Sounds good. Anybody else?
I'd just like to say something before we adjourn, you know, uh, I just wanna thank the citizens for, you know, their vote, whichever they voted, whichever way they voted. And, uh, well, all of us been talking once after election, I think, all of us on the same page, got the same mindset far as trying to look forward and trying to improve our town. Probably gonna be with some disagreement in some areas, but at the end of the day, it's for the entire town, so. Thank y'all for your vote so much.
Thank you.
One more thing I didn't think of, my wife, I didn't realize that was my unfortunate thing. We appreciate you guys.
Yeah, we're freaking good again.
Any other business?
I make a motion again.
Motion. By Steve, second by Denise, all in favor?
Hope to see this many people next month.
Thank y'all for coming out.